All right, let's see here, I gotta turn this off so I don't get in trouble from Chelsea. All right. Ad弥isus, please?
I'll start.
All right.
Ad弥isus, through the flag of the United States of America and through the republic which is saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as one.
Thank you. See, call it to order, roll call, please.
Troy Anderson.
President.
Padraig B. Dwayne Bevo.
President.
John Fairchild.
President.
Christopher Gadway.
Here.
Patty LeBlanc.
Here.
Ed Merron.
Here.
Richard Sears.
Here.
David Trudeau.
Here.
And Ozzy Colmore.
Okay, we're going to, and the next one is the agenda, there's gonna be amendment of the agenda, section F, miscellaneous on page twelve, I believe, is at the left. Is being, yeah, page twelve is being removed. So I need a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Motion.
Okay, John. Second, Dwayne. Discussions, questions about it?
Why are we moving?
There we go.
We're still in negotiations with the Association over one of the items on that memorandum.
Then I'll second it.
Dwayne already seconded it.
Oh, perfect.
Discussing. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Presentations. Opening of schools. What, what? We just did. Yeah, we approved it as amended.
Good evening, everybody. So I first just wanna thank, number one, our building grounds for all the hard work this summer, getting the building back up and running, cleaning up, cleaning up the offices, cleaning up the classrooms, all that fun work. Getting to, uh, get it building ready for teachers and students to come in the building, so I commend them every year for that. I also wanna thank our teachers, our staff, for all the hard work they put in. First couple days of school, a lot, a big lift, getting it back in, in action, getting people back in the routines, and making sure our students have everything they need to start the school year, so I wanna thank our teacher and staff for that process. Uh, I do wanna start, because number one, not only the opening school, but summer school, we got the opportunity to kind of focus on that. We've had the opportunity to run six weeks of summer school the last couple of years. It's highly, been highly productive by high school. Just wanted to kinda give you guys some numbers on the production of what's happening in the summer here on our campuses. Number one, we won't be able to do this again without our teachers, our staff, they come in the building, work with our kids for this high success. I wanna thank all the summer school teachers that did come in the summer and worked really hard with our kids to make sure that we're getting course credit, we're getting regents credit, increasing grades, all these wonderful things that happen in the summer time with the teachers. So just a few numbers for you guys to kinda, to look at. We had fifty-two students obtained course credit this summer. Uh, we had sixty-seven students attend regents review sessions. We had fifty-eight students attend, uh, regents review for a higher score, so they, they had a high score, and it came back and took, because they got to get a higher score, pretty impressive with that, fifty-eight students. We also had forty-four students attain proficiency on the August regents that didn't previously have proficiency. Uh, so those numbers are really impressive for summer work, six weeks, working with kids every day, uh, for five and a half hours, preparing them for that, that work. Really cool thing, too, is having those students come in, six weeks every day, you know, to get those credits they need to be here. Uh, so that's a really cool numbers, that a lot of work went into the summer. Uh, and I wanna commend our staff for all that work and all the hard work that they put in to prepare those students for successful exams and, and course work, so. We started the school year off, it's been a busy week, uh, first, first week is always busy. We started the superintendent's days on the thirtieth and thirty-first. Uh, teachers in the building, we got faculty meeting. One of the big things that we went over this year is the implementation of the set-in mindset, that's the new SEL curriculum in the high school. Uh, so that implementation, we had a, a PD for the morning of the first day, uh, for two hours. We had a presenter here in the LGI, uh, that went through the lessons with us, went through the procedure of what that's gonna look like, uh, and kinda rolled that out, um, in our classrooms here coming up. That was a great PD. I'm excited to have that as part of our, our new initiative here in the high school with the SEL program. Uh, we had freshman orientation on August thirtieth, uh, for our, for our freshmen coming in the building. Uh, we had a night where they could socialize, they had an opportunity to hear the graduation requirements from their counselors. Uh, we had support services here, they had tours, socialization in the gym where they could play. Cornhole, they had the opportunity to play some different things, we had other clubs inside the gymnasium, too, where they could sign up for clubs, they could be, get involved in some of those things here on campus. Uh, I'd also like to thank our NHS students for being here for the tours that they've been providing to our students. We also have a student panel in the high school cafeteria where students and freshmen can ask them questions regarding their experience of freshman, so that was highly successful for those students coming in. Uh, we had great little assemblies last week, uh, last Wednesday. Actually, bringing each class down to the gymnasium, just hoping to expectations with them. Uh, we're gonna rate it, make sure that we're taking care of each other. Uh, that's a big initiative here in the high school, of making sure that we're looking out for each other, we're supporting each other, and really enforcing that through that, those great little assemblies, so that was a great success. And, uh, we finished last Friday with the moving up ceremony, uh, so it was a really cool event. Uh, our seniors got to take their spot in the gymnasium, the senior bleachers. Uh, our freshmen got to be welcomed to the high school, uh, in, in the gym, and we made our way out to the athletic field, uh, for socialization, music, where students can hang out and interact, uh, to end the first week of school. So highly successful first week of school. Uh, I know I was tired on Friday night, I know the students were, the teachers were, uh, but it's a great start to the school year and excited for the next couple of weeks. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, how are you? So I'll start off just, um, commending and giving praise to my summer school faculty. The middle school summer bridge program runs for six weeks, we train each grade levels every two weeks. We had over fifty-five students cycle in and out. Um, one of the key things we've worked on is not only, um, providing them with intervention academically, but working on, with them socially and their social well-being. A lot of our students that struggle in the year are the ones that are invited to attend summer bridge. So they did some work with Champlain Valley Family Center throughout their two-week, throughout the two-week program, working with Tiffany and Tyson, her team of students, or her team, uh, from Champlain Valley Family Center, and had a very positive experience. Uh, we kicked off the school year with our new student orientation, it was a great success, with standing room only. Students and families were able to gain insight into what a sixth grader could expect coming to middle school by sitting through a short presentation facilitated by admins, and then followed by building tours. These were facilitated by National Honor Society students and middle school faculty. We had over twenty middle school faculty attending this orientation, I think it was a, a record. Orientation was followed by our back-to-school bash, um, it was held in the high school gym. It was well-attended by middle school students, their families, and faculty. Students were able to pick up their schedules and sign up for co-curricular activities while enjoying ice cream sundays donated by Stewart's. The first week of school was all about supporting our students and being reacclimated to the building. They became familiar with our school-wide expectations. Teachers did a phenomenal job facilitating activities focused on building relationships, both between and with students. This past Monday, we had an assembly for all seventh grade students on nine eleven, to commemorate nine eleven as a day of service and remembrance. The first portion of the assembly was a presentation about the events of September eleventh, two thousand and one. This was followed by a panel of individuals who served the community in various ways. The panel has shared their experiences, insight, and insights into different aspects of community service, emphasizing the value of giving back and making a difference. This is an excellent opportunity for our students to learn about the importance of service and reflect on the ways they can contribute to our community. This year's panelists included representatives from New York State Police, Eaton Towns, Volunteer Fire Department, City of Plasberg Fire Department, North Country Honor Flight, United Way of the Catarondax, Community Babe Rotary Club, and the American Road Cross. So overall, we're off to a good start and sets the stage for a positive school year. Any questions? Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. So it's a busy summer for Cumberland Head, we have several students and staff participating in the summer bridge program next in school year, as my colleagues have just talked about. We hired several new staff members, offered a lot of PD, and had a lot of fun programs available for students. Several of our faculty and staff members have organized extended learning opportunities for our children. There was a trip to Echo Center, Ben and Jerry's factory tour, and object fun day, that included a trip to the Wild Center and Mount Van Holtenberg. There was also an Irish step class, and lastly, a fun trip to Lake jewelry where students visited Davenport. Uh, that was thanks to our New York ground. There was a two-day summer leadership institute training, help for integrated teachers and special education staff. The training gave teachers a bit understanding of inclusion practices, and also gave them practical strategies that they can take back to their classrooms and use immediately. I was very happy with the participation of Cumberland Head teachers. Again, there was another training, a couple of BES was there as well, there was a two-day Eureka Math Training held in August. We were very happy to have a wonderful presenter who was actually here in person. Um, the first day of the training was designed for those who had not piloted the program last year, and then the second day of the training was designed for those teachers who piloted the program, but they just kinda wanna level up their instruction and get to deeper into the curriculum. So teachers gave a lot of great feedback about the training, so I look forward to working with the teachers this year and seeing how our math program instructions develop. So again, very impressed with the Cumberland Head churnout. We had committee meetings, we had our MTSS committee meeting several times over the summer to help revise our current plans. Changes to highlight include an additional reading intervention program, and now, um, we're using an SEL, part of the plan, which is more well-articulated. And Cumberland Head, thanks to an additional intervention provider that was hired, has a better articulated math intervention program. So I appreciate the thought the committee members put into the plan. Superintendent's days, like the others have mentioned. We dug into the new SEL program at the K through eight level, it's called Character Strong. It, um, teachers were given a two-hour training, they were able to look at the resources, and then they had time to plan with their colleagues. The Cumberland Head faculty meeting gave us a chance to celebrate those hitting milestone years in their careers, and provided us an opportunity to welcome our new staff members, we did have a lot of them. Our new teachers and support staff met with myself to discuss procedures, our committees now have great involvement, and I think teachers will really appreciate it, but also the time they were given in their classrooms to prepare and plan for this year. Open House was on August thirty-first, always very well-attended at Cumberland Head. The PTO provided donuts from Lemonade, we had the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts. And we also had the HSM there with the information, which was very helpful. All the students were given opportunity to meet their classmates, their teachers, and to live the building, play on the playground. On September eleventh, the Eagle Prime Committee set up a PBIS day, and students traveled through the stations to be trained with the various behavior expectations in certain areas of the school. The day was really well-organized, went smoothly, and Eagle Prime shout-out to that committee for making the day so great for the kids. And as the school year started, teachers were very busy building relationships, routines with students, developing classroom routines, rituals, and all this work they put into the beginning served them well as the year goes on. As my colleagues mentioned, again, thank you to the business department, buildings and grounds, the transportation department, food service, the district office staff, for our faculty and staff for helping us over the summer so we can have a good productive start to the school year. I look forward to the new school year, working together with staff, students, and families to conquer whatever challenges that we have and to celebrate each other's school year.
Thank you.
Questions?
Questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I just wanna reiterate what Principal Stautler mentioned about the MTSS committee, professional development, Character Strong, a lot of these things, it's interesting for Garcia and I to go through, we do a lot of the same stuff, about the summertime of the school year. So I don't wanna repeat some of that stuff, but I emulate what she was talking about. So, our support head days were very successful, we had a lot of excitement, our open house was on the thirtieth as well. We had about ninety percent participation from families, which was phenomenal, it was incredibly busy in there. Also, our PTO, over the summer, on the fourth, they had their first chalk the walk. So we had many parents and kids chalk the walk at the entrance of the BES, and lit up to live it to the high school, too, with fun pictures and sayings, and it was just, it was beautiful. They also came in and built a balloon arch, an entryway for us to come into, and they provided snack for us for the open house as well. So very involved PTO, we're very thankful for that. I also wanna send a huge, huge thank you out to buildings and grounds as well. Eaton Towne Elementary School, the phenomenal opening days, the staff was flexible with our teachers, and they worked tirelessly to ensure we were ready. I was thoroughly impressed, I think I mentioned that to Jen several times, actually. Uh, we are thrilled to welcome the new staff, including Associate Principal, Mrs. Crew. She's jumping into this role, and she's hit the ground ready. We're also quite fortunate to welcome new teaching staff, new support staff in our building. The aforementioned specialist role for the HSN is also continuing, and that partnership has been very beneficial for us. Today was our sixth day of school with kids, and as you know, it's been a little busy, but we're hitting the ground running, and we're doing a really good job. We have a welcome back assembly planned for this Friday, with our expectation stations coming up next Monday and Tuesday. We're all doing kinda the same stuff, seriously. But I wanna do a shout-out to our PBIS committee for planning that, got set to go. And lastly, um, they mentioned the ALAs as well, but our VAS and ALAs are cranking. Bringing students with excellent opportunities to explore and learn about new things. We're looking forward to a very busy, joyous adventure and on after school. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right. You're up.
So, you know, you heard from the four building heads, basically, it's a team effort. I've been very impressed with the faculty, the staff, the administration, when working together, they do some great things for the kids, the community, coming in and being, participating and supporting the school and the students. I mean, we could talk about all of those orientation nights, the last Friday's football game, which was well-attended, and there was so much community participation there with the baskets and everything else. So the bones here are good, they're strong, we just need to, you know, keep moving forward. We had a great start, I also wanna, Duffy's nine eleven comment, you know, it's been twenty-two years, time flies. You know, for some of us, it was like yesterday, and, and, you know, I did the math once, and, you know, these kindergarten kids are really no different than when I was in kindergarten. It's pretty close to when our principal used to go up and, and we used to do Pearl Harbor Day. And you don't hear or see of that anymore, it sort of disappeared in sixty-eight, sixty-nine. So I hope, you know, remember, 'cause it is a day called Patriot's Day, that things continue to happen. Uh, we have Constitution Day coming up on the seventeenth, I hope there's something done in that retrospect for the kids, too. So, you know, we look forward, it was a great opening, the first week went extremely well. We only got like thirty-nine to go, and we'll be walking the stage of graduation, right? So thanks, thank you for everyone here that's, you know, made a good start to the year.
Excellent, thank you. Anybody have questions for the special? No? Okay. Ms. Prom.
Um, we don't have much, we've been supporting all these wonderful things that these people have been doing to get started. Um, a lot of the buildings and grounds and bacteria and transportation deserves a, I mean, to reroute and route and route again and route some more. Um, so just thank you to everybody, everything went very well. Uh, we'll be, just so, Chelsea and I will be sending out an email for audit committee. Um, Mr. Bulwark should be done our audit this week, we're hoping, we've been in contact, and, um, he will come to the audit committee and present. And then if you guys would like, he can also come to October's board meeting. Up to you guys, but, um, so we'll be in touch shortly to let you know when, when will be best for the audit committee to meet.
Okay. Excellent, thank you. All right. And, so the other committee is the Athletic Class Curricula, and I was on that by phone. We kinda started revisiting the whole, the whole program, and anybody wanna talk to it?
Yeah, I guess I was there, um, evening. So basically, we reviewed the, um, the assessment tool, as well as the coach's handbook. And in the end, Scott, you were there, too, we reviewed the, um, the assessment tool, and I think we pretty much got to it, but we need to bring it before the whole committee again. And then we'll be able to bring the assessment tool, as well as the coach's handbook to everyone. I think it's well-done, it's done in a way that we're helping people to grow, because we know that, you know, we have to model for the kids ourselves, and that, that's where it came from. So we're looking at doing honest assessments, but honest assessments that are gonna help our programs grow, help our coaches grow, and then provide more opportunities for children to successful programs.
That's what it's about, it's about the kids, right? Um... Yeah, okay. Anybody have any comments on that? No? Keep moving. All right. Resolve that the interim superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following minutes. Yes? Did I skip it? Oh, it's at the bottom. Anyone here for public comment? Forever hold your peace. Sure? Okay. Thank you. Resolve that the interim superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following minutes. Motion, please.
Motion, Rick.
Rick? Second?
I'll second.
John? Any discussion in the minutes? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Resolve that the interim superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the CSC, CPSC, and five oh four recommendations dated nine twelve twenty-three. Motion, please. Patty? Second?
I'll second.
Okay, okay. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Personnel. It's always full of stuff. Resolve that the interim superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, resignations, termination, appointments be and are hereby approved. Need a motion, please.
Motion, John.
John? Second?
I'll second, David.
David? All right, let's, uh... Mr. Best, is there anything you wanna highlight in this list? We've written over this in the agenda setting, John and I and Best. Does anybody have any questions on this?
Is there good clarity, um, especially about, say, if somebody wants to be a plus A, or whatever type of A, or whatever, is there good clarity to the support staff, to the employees, uh, who is eligible and who is non-eligible to apply for certain positions?
Jobs are posted, and if there's any, and the bottom line is, any questions, please contact Victoria Ashway. So Victoria will answer any question that you need, and she'll work with you to help you with civil service. So, you know, anyone, believe me, we're looking for people to grow. Or even to join a program.
Question. Anyone else? Other questions of personnel? All right. That puts us all the way through to page ten.
Did we vote on that?
Oh, yeah. All in favor? All right. Thank you, John. Motion passes. Miscellaneous. Consent agenda. Resolve that the interim superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, contract, SRO, admissions for supporting events, building-level emergency response plans, district-wide school safety plan, MOU with support staff, oh, that one's out. Agreement between CFES and BCSD and athletic mergers, be and are hereby approved, I mean, a motion, please. Okay? Dwayne? Second? Rick? All right, any questions, discussions, thoughts? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Financial section. Resolve that the interim superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, transfers be and are hereby approved. Motion, please.
Motion, Rick.
Rick? Second?
Patty.
Patty? All right, this is a roll call, any discussion first? Okay, roll call, please.
Troy Anderson.
Aye.
Padraig B. Dwayne Bevo. John Fairchild.
Yes.
Christopher Gadway.
Yes.
Patty LeBlanc.
Yes.
Ed Merron.
Yes.
Richard Sears.
Yes.
David Trudeau.
Yes.
Motion passes. Public comment. Oh, additional items to discuss first, hold on. Board retreat.
Yeah, figure out a date that works for you guys, where you guys wanna do it. And I can reach out to Miss Buck, well, I can reach out to Miss Buck for dates.
Right.
We're thinking like, October, if you wanna do it here. We really have two guys.
We, we had had some discussions about doing it over at CVS, so we could have a chance to do it there, and everyone get a chance to visit, if you haven't been there. Um, that's an option if anybody wants to. You can have it catered by anybody in the district. One of the things I would like to change that we haven't done before is, we've always had it at one place in, within the district, and it'd be kinda nice to spread the love and start having different restaurants or caterings participate, so, that would be...
So if we're looking to do it at CVS?
Does anybody have any?
I like that idea.
You like that idea?
I would, I would love it at CVS, and I'd love it if the, they could do the catering from CVS, if that were a possibility. Those students do a great job, and it's nice to see.
It's good for you.
So I'll reach out to, um, Miss Buck for a few dates, and I'll email you guys and let you know, like, whatever the one, like, usually in the past, I've made like a spreadsheet, you guys just tell me what dates.
Sure.
Like, they'll give me three dates, and then I send it to you guys, you guys tell me what date works better for you, whatever date, like, has the most people that are available, that's what we're scheduled for.
Okay. It would be good for the board, if you would like to send, send me some thoughts as to what is important that you feel you need covered, more information on, more or less, we have a pretty, relatively new board, so, a lot of that's, a lot of stuff is covered in your New York State-required education program, but if there's anything in particular you wanna discuss, this is the time to do it, right?
Who's gonna put it on the same one as last year?
Uh, we don't know. We don't know. But we can have them tailor anything to what we want. In fact, we don't have to do, do it just once a year, we could have, we could have one for this, and do one for something else specifically different that we feel is really critical, since, you know, we're trying to move forward and grow and...
And I believe they send out a spreadsheet for you guys, or like a form, um, asking you what you guys would like to discuss.
All right. Good. Yeah. On, on the agenda earlier, I'm attending the, um, school board meeting in October. So every year, especially for those that are new, every year, New York State School Boards Association sends out a survey to all board members about different topics. And we answer, and based on that, the response on the survey, the school board association gets together with attorneys, and they kinda filter out, if, if there are topics that are like fifty-fifty, they won't really kinda go after them. But if there are topics that have some significant separation, what they do is they have representatives from every region of the state, and they get together several times before this, this yearly congress, if you will. And they go over resolutions that different school boards put together. If there's something that a teacher, administrator, parent wants to see changed in education in New York State, they work with the local school boards to create this request to be moved forward to the yearly program. And it's kind of an interesting process, because it's a way that many changes in school education have happened, is they come through... Is they come through that system, they go through the resolutions committee, gets presented at, at the yearly business meeting, and then if it's voted in favor, then that gets moved to all the attorneys to, to work with the legislature to try to affect education change. So we haven't done that here, but I think it's something for us to start looking forward. If you look at your emails, there's probably a resolution package. I can't to you, it's big. If you have some thoughts on it, if you want to give me some thoughts, you're welcome to take a look at it and send it to me. So, so what they do in that resolution packet, they go over all the resolutions they put forward for support and some for not support, and they'll tell you why the body felt that they want to support that, and they'll tell you why the ones that they didn't want to support. It's good information. Okay? What else?
Do you want to input on the Hall of Fame discussion?
Yeah, we kind of, yes, let's do it.
So just to follow up, we've, the Hall of Fame committee has continued to work to try to move forward. We have selected candidates to induct this year. We are still challenged with the, how do we fund this and move the money along, given that the process that was used in the past is not entirely correct, and we need to revise that. So there may be a later date for people being inducted and the dinner that they have for them and so on. We've talked about maybe moving it to the winter sports season and doing it in conjunction with the Hannah's Hope night for the hockey team, where there's always a big crowd around. We don't want to not have this tournament, but we also want to figure out what we have to do to get this right moving forward and protect everybody, so that's where the committee's at. Any questions on that? I do tell you, we have two inductees for this year. Very, very, very deserving people.
Excellent. Good. Thank you very much. Anybody else for public comment?
I've got, I've got actually one more question.
One more?
I, I'm on a roll tonight. I saw recently the governor has decided that the Lunar New Year is going to be a new holiday for schools. Does that impact this year's schedule or?
No, it's on a Saturday. It's on a Saturday, but the next two years it'll be during a school day. So it's just, there's another day that everything gets compressed. And the other one that's still out there, which might pass, is the Wali, which is an Indian holiday for, you know, somewhere in that area. It's the festival of colors where they draw all the colors in the air.
All right. Interesting. So the Lunar one, are you saying that we're going to have, it's going to be a hit or miss every year, depending on whether it's on a school day?
Yep.
So even if it's not on a school day, they're not going to make it happen on a Friday or Monday?
It's not a state holiday.
Okay.
She made it a holiday for schools only. So state workers still have to go in. Everyone else, it's only a school holiday.
All right. There we go.
Thank you.
And there's other groups out there now that are upset that their holidays haven't happened yet. So it's going to keep happening.
Someone's always going to be upset. But before I forget, thank you, John, for stopping. Anybody else have, anything else you would like to discuss? This is the time to do it, and additional items. Questions, thoughts? All right. Okay. Public comment? Nothing there? And we do not have an accession, executive session planned for the evening? Don't be too excited, Perry. Resolve that the Board of Education adjourned the meeting at? Where are we at? Six fifty-three? Is that right? All in favor? I mean, no, sorry. I need a motion, please.
I'll second.
Okay, Dwayne and. Are you sure anybody else want to stay here? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much, and thank you for a start of the year.